Rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Tenell Roca.
All members present, Jennifer, excused.
All right, board correspondent report.
Just a reminder that the district regional meeting is October 5th at the Rock Gardens in Green Bay. We want to register, I don't know if we all should just register individually or will Tammy or maybe Tammy, we just let Tammy know?
Yeah, I think Tammy usually registers us.
Okay, I don't know if we've, you know, so if you're gonna go, I guess maybe just shoot her an email and tell you a plan on going. The DPI released some sudden cardiac arrest resources for schools to use and anybody that's associated with youth activities. The school districts are required to distribute that info about the nature and the risk of sudden cardiac arrest to coaches, participants, and parents. Those resources can be found on the DPI website. This is something that's just popped up in the last year or so, this sudden cardiac arrest, so we need to take this pretty seriously because it's happening all over, all over the country with young, young people. The Department of Education and the Office of Special Education and Rehabilitative Services announced new guidance to help public schools fulfill the responsibilities to meet the needs of students with disabilities. So there's new guidelines for that. And then the Wisconsin Office of Mental Health released a fact sheet about strengthening student mental health, which is so important, I don't know how important it is. Positive mental health can be, can improve learning, attendance, reduce bullying, substance abuse, and violence. And some of the highlights that they found out were a positive school culture and one that's, and it supports a sense of belonging because every student needs a sense that they belong somewhere and that just bolsters their, they help support them. And then having a connection to at least one person at school. Some of these kids don't have a connection with anybody, so if you have a connection with at least one person at school, that's so important. Sufficient sleep and peer-led, peer-led youth groups are vital to giving students a voice. And that's something I think that we do very well here because we, we kind of pride ourselves on the student-led initiatives.
Programs, yeah.
From, you know, at the grade school, the high school, the Pathfinder, the charter school, we're all very good at doing that, so. That's all I have.
Any questions for Pat? Okay, we'll keep moving. Board CISA report, Meg.
Well, I had a really nice lunch with Colleen Tim.
How good.
Down here at Cafe Talazo and, you know, we're going through some growing pains too with different administration, but I expressed to her the concerns we have over, you know, where we kind of went sour with CISA a few years ago and, you know, why we really backed off on our contracts and the concern we have with joining this group on the internship program. But I will say, I was very, I'm very, so far I'm very pleased with, you know, how she's, where she's moving this agency to. She cut down the, which is interesting, she cut down the number of products offered from thirty-six to eleven. So it's almost like we're going a little bit backward because, you know, if there was a dollar to be made, you know, somehow, you know, the past administrator was gonna make that dollar.
Right.
Whether, you know, so they looked at the services that all the, you know, schools are using and it's kind of like going back to basics, you know. The motto is service, it's a service-first model, so I'm very happy about that because I thought sometimes we just got really spread too thin.
And he was, your report was, he always said something new happening.
Right, right. So, so far, you know, I'm liking what I hear. Like I said, she's very concerned about, you know, us and she really has to put her best foot forward, their best foot forward to bring us back to where we were before. So we'll see what happens, but I'm, so far I'm very, very pleased, so.
Good.
Let's go from there.
So it sounds like they're spreading, they spread themselves too thin. It's almost like we can be mediocre at everything or we can be really good at some things.
Well, I think some of these, I mean, some of these products, for heaven's sakes, I even forgot we had them because thirty-six, you know.
Yeah, how do you even keep track?
You know, and then we went with that model where you paid for your time, you know, then that's where I think we really lost it with them because we paid for our time and no one showed up. Well, that's pretty hard to have trust in an organization that does that. And I told Colleen that and, you know, I tried to get some information out of, out of the past administrator back in there, but he could never seem to come up with an answer for me, so.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing some things change a little bit and
Yeah, for a start.
And it gets a little bit better. She will be at every, coming to every board meetings, you know, to run the district, at least one a year, so you guys will all get a chance to meet her and actually have any questions, talk to her.
Sounds positive. Questions for Meg. Okay, I don't have any misconceptions or rumors to report. Participation, has anyone signed up to speak? No? All right. I don't have any board president announcements other than it was very nice to attend the welcome of the staff today. Several of us were able to attend and Jessie was up there welcoming everybody. It was a very positive event. The feeling in the auditorium was upbeat. I think everybody's sort of on the right path and raring to go. At least that was the, you know, the feeling I got. I sat in the front initially because I had done my little thing on the goals, but then I sat in the back and so I was sort of able to overhear different comments and every, everybody seems to be in a good frame of mind. I mean, an improved one. I think these last few years have been really tough on everybody and everybody's looking forward to maybe having some normalcy, so let's hope we can have that, so. We'll move on to administration reports. That would be you.
Yes, so just want to piggyback off of what you were just saying, Barb. We had our welcome back in service, so all staff, about a hundred and twenty staff members today showed up and it was a great, great day, really was. Busy day. I am pretty beat right now and I think the admin team would join me, but we did a lot of the nuts and bolts this morning. We talked about the district goals, we talked about Title IX policy and procedures, we talked about social media use by staff members, some school safety items, so. A big shout out and thank you to Cafe Talazo. They provided donated coffee for all the staff this morning and then we had some donuts available for them. And then also a big thank you to Northwater Bakery and Deli, because they provided us some lunches for all the staff today. And then for the afternoon, we spent the time touring four local businesses and what amazing opportunity that was to see what is happening in our community, see some former students that worked, are working on the job. And so we toured CTI, the label, Ebert Enterprise, and Precision Machine. So all the staff hopped on buses and we drove from place to place throughout the afternoon, so it was a great opportunity, so, very eye-opening. Transportation survey, so hopping down to letter B. You have a copy in front of you, it was not included in the board packet. When I've met with each individual, individual board members, this is something I spoke about a little bit, so trying to figure out what it would take to provide some busing transportation services to students that live within the city limits. So right now we offer busing to only students that live two miles or more outside of the city. And so we crunched some numbers, we have about sixty percent of our students that live in the city. We don't believe all students would use the transportation though, and so we would like to just collect some preliminary data to see how many families would be exploring transportation from the district if it was an option. And so in front of you is a copy of a survey that I created using Google Forms that I would like to send out to the parents once the school year gets going. By filling out this survey does not mean that we will be able to provide transportation, it's just collecting some preliminary data for us, so.
Yeah, I think that's a good first step.
Yep.
Letter C that I have is private school transportation obligation. So with Saint Mary's closing this year and some of our students that live in our attendance area attending Saint Mary's now have to, have the option of attending Holy Trinity, which is in Casco. And because Holy Trinity is within, I believe it's five miles or two miles of the district border boundaries, we have to provide transportation to these families that opt to go there. And so we did some crunching of the numbers and we have two options to provide the families. One, we can provide direct transportation, which meaning we can run a van or a bus to pick up the child and bring them out to Holy Trinity, or we can do paid contracts with the parents where we pay them a mileage rate for every single day and they would transport their child to and from, home to Holy Trinity. The numbers that we crunched with the salary of a driver, additional driver we would need, paying them about fifteen dollars an hour, the taxes benefits, the fuel costs would cost about twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars if we would do our own transportation. If we did the paid contract, we would be looking at about nine thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars is what we anticipate. So we are recommending that we go with the paid contract to families that want that option, so. And then my last update is on just finances and this is very brief. I've been working closely with Baird the last couple days here and we should be getting our equalized valuations from Baird, so knowing what property taxes and how they are increasing and that will directly relate to what funding we receive from the local municipalities. But just a reminder that our final budget hearing will be in October before our normal board meeting, so.
Jessie, give them back that transportation to the school in Casco or any school like it. If we decide to go that parent contract, what if half of them want the contract and half of them want the bus? Then the bus wouldn't be here as efficient.
The district gets to provide or choose the option and whatever they choose is the only option that the families can take.
Okay.
So they don't have a choice.
I didn't know that they had the options.
I'm assuming if, if, because I'm, I'm with you on this because I think that, first of all, it would be hard to find a van driver because we had a hard time finding van drivers before and then you have to get them to school at their starting time, so they're not gonna meet here first and then take them to Casco, they'll always be late for school. So, yeah, I think that you're, the option you're recommending is probably the best.
Well, and we are short a van right now as well. Our new van that we ordered still is not in, it's on back orders.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, who knows when you're gonna get that?
Right.
Okay.
They stopped in there last week and they have not heard a date yet, so.
That's too bad.
What about the truck?
Still on back order as well.
Yeah, well, the parent contract option was several thousand dollars cheaper as well, so I mean, there just seems to be a lot of good reasons to go that route. And that is something we will have in action tonight, so we'll have the opportunity to discuss it further if anybody wanted to. Any other questions for Jessie? All right, thank you, Jessie. We'll move on to elementary principals report. That would be you, Katie.
Well, I also wanted to extend a welcome back to our teachers, our returning teachers and staff, and also our new teachers. Usually once August hits, teachers kind of start trickling in at the elementary school and spend a couple hours here, a couple hours there, setting up their classrooms, but then this week they're all back and there's a lot of energy, there's a lot of, kind of piggybacking off of what Jessie said, I think after today everyone's gonna be a little bit exhausted, definitely in a good way, but it's always, that first day back is always really tiring. But it's really great to see everybody and I'm looking forward to kind of just jumping right in and, you know, getting back to some things that, that we're used to doing. So welcome to everybody. This past Thursday, last week Thursday on the eighteenth, we hosted our new teacher orientation and so we had all of our new staff join us for a day of kind of getting to know the district, getting to know each other, getting to know us administrators, kind of shared some nuts and bolts information and then we had some time to, they also had some time to connect with their mentors, so the more veteran teachers who they're paired with that will kind of help them throughout the year. Peter Schmidt with the help of Dave organized a tour for our new teachers so they got to see the community, businesses, kind of just some different areas around town, so that was really nice. And then we did all enjoy lunch together at Red's, so a huge thank you to them for hosting us, opening special for us. They created a menu, a limited menu for us to choose from and really did a fantastic job. So that was really fun. And then I just wanted to share some information about open house at the elementary school. So we have open house on Thursday this year for students in grades one through six and that is from three to six. During that time, students can bring their school supplies, meet their teacher, see the classroom, there'll be some tables set up in the commons as well to pick up some other information. Any students that are in fourth grade and kindergarten, those teachers have contacted the parents directly and they have set up one-on-one teacher meet and greets for Wednesday, August twenty-fourth. And then we have our Little Stars and our childhood students that are doing something similar, they've just kind of split the group in half, so we have half the alphabet, most names A through K coming on Tuesday, and then the other half of the alphabet coming on Thursday. That's something that we kind of switched to because of COVID and the teachers really liked having that more personalized touch with the younger kids instead of trying to meet all the parents and all the kids who are four and five years old and everything's new and the teachers always felt like they didn't really have enough time to get to know the families one-on-one and make that first impression. So, so it's kind of a busy week for us at the elementary school, after-school hours, so our teachers will definitely, definitely be working hard, but that is all I have.
Okay. Questions for Katie? All right, we'll keep moving. Middle school, high school principals report. Dave.
Okay, we had an opportunity to meet some of our new staff members, Shannon Cole, Ray Bauman, Emma Vader, and Kate O'Gree. Got some more time on them today, very excited about bringing them on board, also as Katie mentioned, happy to see our veteran staff returning. Today we took a local business tour with the staff. I haven't had any official feedback from the staff, but the unofficial feedback that I had, I drove one of the buses, was that the, the staff enjoyed it. The businesses that we toured each expressed gratitude for us being there, there's a real desire for them to continue to work with the school district. Many of them expressed a desire to have more employees, many of which they would love to come from, our students or graduating students. So in that way, I think it was a very productive day based on their feedback. And then I will get more feedback from the staff undoubtedly as we have time to break that down. Let's see, I also attended the, Whitney's first parent guardian and student athlete fall sports meeting. She did an excellent job. I also would like to just point out that we did, or that she did, distribute sudden cardiac arrest information along with concussion information and all the other information that is required to all of, all of the parents, students, and coaches. So that information as far as the requirements for the school district was in fact taken care of at that meeting. Okay, threat assessment, training, while I can't say it was super exciting, was very informative and there were several actionable items that we took away from that, so I'm excited to see just a couple of changes. One, for example, would be some changes to the website where we'd be able to provide some student support. We have a tab for that, it's all information for parents, there's nothing for students if they click on that tab. So moving some things under that tab that students can access, including a tip line so that we can hear our students and also actually any parent in the community that would have a concern, that's another avenue that we have to give that information. And then there's some other things that we can, that we'll discuss as an admin team that I think that we can, we can take action on to improve the safety of our school. All in all, I thought the training was very informative and very encouraging. And then leadership through iVenture, just wanted to mention that Eric Nelson came in and talked to me a few days after they had returned and he made a comment that no matter what, what we had heard, that things went very, very well and that everything went well. He said the students were excellent, he said the chaperones were fantastic. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that as far as he was concerned, that was a positive experience all the way around. That's all I have.
Dave.
Hi, I'm John P. Dayman, late town, but for the rest of the group, when you have a career day or tour the area with staff, Adam Barta would like to be added to your list. They handle millions of bushels of grain there, they manage probably fifty thousand acres of land for the farmers in this area. They got, they ship train cars, twenty-six to thirty train tires at a time of grain out of Hudsonburg. It's no small operation, it's a
Yeah, that'd be very interesting.
Much-figure operation most people realize in this area. And he was kind enough to, he would have asked you to come today, but he had a meeting already planned, so.
Good to know.
He hired a lot of local people.
Okay, any other comments or questions for Dave? Okay, we will keep moving. Pathfinder, AlgoMa Venture Academy report. That would be you, Katie.
Yeah, so I'm gonna give a little update on numbers on our app for the year. So currently at Pathfinder we have ten, looking at eleven students to start the year, which is pretty average, we always have quite a few trickle-ins throughout the year. We do one student opening role, which is exciting. And then for ABA, we are at thirty-nine with two more that just applied today that we need to meet with, so our cap is forty-five. So we are getting very close to that cap, which is gonna be interesting. I mean, I'm really excited for all the new kids who are joining there, awesome. Just with space, we'll be a little bit creative with that. And then the second part is ABA, so Tanya Kivik-Meals is one of our, she was our former Bellin mental health therapist and then she went off on her own, she was working with some of our students last year, brought in all the ABA staff for a two-day training last week, which was absolutely amazing. She did some of the stuff that she does with our kids with us, but then, I mean, because most of the ABA staff has worked together before, but I'm new there, we have Penny on full-time this year, so she just did different things to have like group connection and communication, how to handle conflict, and then how we can roll over some of those skills into working with our students. She gave us little tips and tricks on how to motivate some of our challenging students. She was doing some art therapy with us. It was just a really cool two days because it was very different than what anybody's used to do in like therapy, it's just a totally different form of that. So it was really awesome to just be able to work together and kind of get to know each other better as a staff and then how to, you know, work, how to communicate better throughout the year when it comes to working with our students. She gave us, you know, just how to, tips and tricks on how to kind of foster a community and environment, a community within our students as well, so. Really awesome two days with her and then she's going to continue two hours a month to meet with staff, so it's not just like a sit and get, it'll actually continue on throughout the year. And then she's also going to be working with our group of students from ABA at the high school, I believe, at elementary school this year again, so. Really glad to just continue to have her in school a little bit, as I always tell her, like, you're ready? She walks in and she's just like this calming, like she's just this sense of calm when she walks into the room, so it's really grateful to have her continue to be with AlgoMa.
Sounds great.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Of the thirty-nine and the two new applications, are any of those open and roll or are they our own students?
Our own students.
All our own, okay. All right.
Well, we, well, we had one last year that was going to be to you.
Okay, okay. All right, any further questions for?
Yeah, the mental, Tanya, where is she from?
She lives in Brussels.
No, no, I mean, it would, I mean, she's just an independent mental health nurse? She just, we just found her or is she with like?
No, she was working for Bellin.
Oh, through Bellin, okay.
Yeah, so she was our first Bellin mental health therapist that we got.
Okay, so she's still through Bellin?
No.
So she's independent?
She works for a company called Soul Glu Therapy, which is on Milwaukee, but it's more, I mean, she's kind of, she's independent but works for them.
Okay. I'm trying to figure out how to break this in my minutes here, that's all. Also, when these kids apply for the charter school or, does anybody get turned down? I mean, are there requirements, certain requirements and?
We have parent meetings and student, so we have a student-parent meeting with all, every kid that applies and kind of just walk them through like what ABA is about.
Okay.
And at the end of the year last year, we had a whole group of middle schoolers that had applied, I think, because a teacher had upset them in the traditional school, so we are very open and honest as if like, do you really think, like, are you independent enough to work on your own?
Yeah, because that's, that's a big one.
Mm-hmm, so, yeah, there are students that, not so many turned away, but after the meeting, we're just like, is this really the best fit for you? And we have a real conversation with their parents, like, is your student able to do a lot of these things? And, I mean, there have been students that have decided to not just because of the meetings that we've had, so.
Well, with, after the application, there is a group meeting with the parents, with the staff from AlgoMa Venture Academy and, yeah, to really have kids understand what, what it is, so, yeah. Because like you said, if it's just because they're angry at their teacher, it's not a great reason.
I mean, all the kids that did that, all of them, after we had a meeting, they're like, no, we're just kidding, so. It just mad at people, so, yeah. No, not everybody.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Special ed wellness report, that would be you, Marie.
We are in hopes of adding an additional special ed teacher onto our middle school, high school team with the goal in mind of having more of a community-based life skills type program for a growing need in that area. So that is, to help alleviate some of the high case loads, we have three special ed teachers up at the seven twelve building right now, so adding on an additional teacher would help provide a little bit more individualized programming, I mean, all of those students have an individualized education program, however, we would be able to design instruction where we could get them out in the community a little bit more and prepare them for maybe job-related skills, if that is
They're cool.
More on the loneliness side, last month we talked about DCMC. Jessie and I had the opportunity to meet with both DCMC and Bellin within the past two weeks. It's kind of exciting to know that both companies are very aware and okay with the fact that we're, you know, utilizing multiple providers because I think they both said, you know, it takes a village and it's obviously a huge need and we want to do whatever we can to support student mental health. There were some questions last month about just the contract, it was updated, and then it was also a question about what to do if a student could not afford or did not have insurance and there are programs available through the Affordable Care Act, correct me if I'm wrong, Jessie? And it sounded like the avenue of going without a charter in the school would be a very rare occurrence because there are multiple different avenues that they could try first because they were very adamant on they would not turn depending on a way based on having the WPA. And remind you too, were there any follow-up questions that I didn't answer about student mental health? And remind you too, were there any follow-up questions that I didn't answer about the student mental health?
How familiar, I have the contract in front of me, you don't probably.
Can you pack it?
Yeah. Yeah. In terms of compensation, this is for the Door County one. I mean, under compensation, they just basically say, no compensation shall be due from the district for patient-specific behavioral healthcare services. Instead, DCMC shall bill patients and/or applicable third-party payers for patient-specific behavioral health services. DCMC shall be solely responsible for paying any compensation to its personnel. So, so what you're saying is they're including in that that they would be trying to bill some of these other third-party payers? Or would we be involved in some of that?
For us to be, to provide a voucher would be a really rare occurrence. However, we didn't put that in there just because of the, um, thing that's happening. What they're trying to say is that by them coming into our school system, we're not financially responsible for that. They're just using our site as just an additional clinical study where they would provide their services.
Okay.
In the meeting, they said no student will be turned away from services. So they have alternative ways through the state. Yep, through Badger Care that they can look at as.
And they're willing to do that, it looks like.
They're very willing to.
And so that makes it very simple for the district. So that's very nice. Okay, great.
And then lastly, for that help in wellness community, we are looking for different avenues to promote health and wellness care. And we show that that's something that we truly value. It's no secret that in order to best take care of our students, we need to make sure that we're taking care of ourselves. You know, put our mask on first because that, one of the key rules when we look at mental health, if we don't have a, you know, good mental health, how are we expecting our students to have a good mental health? So to help alleviate that, a couple of things, a couple of offerings that we're working toward is a free membership for our, individual membership for our staff members to the wellness center. And in addition to that, Whitney and I created a little after-school offering on Mondays and Wednesdays right at the elementary. So we're gonna do kind of a more high-intensity workout on Mondays and a lower-intensity workout on Wednesdays to try and kind of meet different needs and interest levels. Excited about that opportunity.
Yeah. Marie, I thought our staff members did get a membership to the.
I did too.
Previously, it was $15 a month for the staff members.
Students, that, students were free, but the staff was not.
I thought.
And we have a discounted one for families.
Staff was never, were they?
Staff was not.
Right, I thought that.
It was possible that it was free when it first opened, but then I think we moved to the paid membership.
Oh, okay. Well, so we're gonna go back to that? Good.
Yeah, that can be motivating, you know, if you don't have to worry about paying.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments for Marie? Well, we'll move on to committee reports. Safety Committee Meeting, August 11th. That would be you, Chris.
We came up with, I guess, our own version of an SRO contract, what we thought, kind of cut and pasted from some other SRO contracts from around the area. I know Jessie was working on getting a file from the police chief that he could kind of cut and paste. And he got that to us, but I don't see it in the packet. Did you get a chance to talk with the chief at all about it?
So I've talked with the chief, made the recommendations that we had, that I shared with you. Right now, it's in the hands of our legal counsel to review. We share the same legal counsel as what the city has. So they are trying to get agreement signed, which I already sent back for us last Wednesday. They haven't received one from the city yet. So once they get that, then they can review it, knowing that they represent both parties, and then provide the feedback. And then I would bring that back forward to the committee and then we'll move forward from there, so.
So have you seen all the changes that are in there from the city? Or have they done additional changes?
The changes the city made were only reflecting the increase of hours that we were proposing or looking at.
Okay.
Science Focus says that octopuses have three horns, one pump blood around the body, the other two pump blood to the gills.
Okay, so you were pretty satisfied with what you guys came up with in terms of what?
Absolutely. We discussed it at length and we came up with, I think, a lot of good things that we want in our SRO.
Okay, we'll be anxious to see.
I'll add to that too, because I did talk with Matt Murphy from the city today. His next step, once he gets it back, would be to bring it to the PPP committee for review. And then they meet next Tuesday, so he's hoping he can have that before next Tuesday. And then to the full board at their next meeting, which I think is September 6th, I believe, the, right after Memorial Day, I think, or Labor Day, so. So that's our timeline that we're looking at for this.
So they have to approve it and then it comes back here.
We'll have to approve it also.
And then we'll have to, yeah, because the full board has not seen it.
Correct.
Okay.
Where do we stand on that additional 5%?
Yes, so I asked.
I don't like that at all.
Matt today about it. He said it's standard with any contract that the city does. But he said that he is willing to talk to the full board about seeing if we can get that taken out, so.
So he says that's standard with every contract that this, when they contract for, like, what else would they contract for?
Explain the 5% so people.
Oh, well, it was an extra 5%, which came to about $2 an hour. And it basically, from what the first meeting we were at, came down to, so they would, could send us a bill twice a year.
Administrative fee.
So.
Sounds pretty hefty.
To do their job.
That's exactly what we, we all agreed that.
Very qualified ladies, you know, that are working there and getting paid by city taxpayers. So they want another 5% and I just can't, I can't figure that out.
Especially if it's, if it's a contract, there isn't a lot of billing involved on that.
I don't know. I don't know.
And it's only twice a year. It's not like they'd be billing us every other week or once a month.
Yeah.
So that was one issue I had, it's kind of stuck in my craw a little bit, but, I mean, I, when they say it's standard that they, with every contract, so they.
Well, we don't have to agree with it.
I used to do the contracts for the marina, but I didn't charge, we didn't charge an extra 5% to every boarder. I didn't, they didn't back then.
Matt just said it's standard that it's written to their bylaws that the city has, that they do that with any contract that they.
That's interesting.
But he said he's willing to talk to the full board.
Okay.
Well, I think they need to talk to the full board about that because I think that's completely unreasonable in this circumstance.
Well, it's, it's an extra $2 and some cents an hour.
That's a lot of money. It is. Double taxation. Yeah, double taxation.
Well, yeah, kind of, sort of, yeah, I guess you could look at it that way.
Well, right, it is double because we're paying for the people at the, you know, to do their job with our taxes. And then we'd be paying again with people's taxes that are paying us to then pay them. So yeah, good point, Ann. Yeah, so we, we have to.
That was my only.
Yeah, it's a good.
Take on it.
Yeah, absolutely. It has to be looked at, so I hope he is convincing to his group. Yes.
Preston Zett is doing the same thing. He just started that they charge, if you want a paper bill, they charge $5 a month. Thanks for sending the bill.
Who is this?
Preston Zett.
Really? Well.
You did.
I bet you did.
I'm sure you did.
Okay, any other comments, discussion, whatever, okay.
One more thing, Barb, we did, we did discuss updates to emergency response protocols. All staff will receive a workable emergency management plan. The admin team met and reported emergency response team leads are in place and they're currently waiting on quotes for numbering of windows. We decided that maybe we should have all the windows numbered as well as the doors. And give first responders a better idea of where to go sometimes.
I think that's an excellent idea. Yeah, very good. Okay.
It was very helpful because, you know, Jessie, he again mentioned it today, that school safety is one of his passions, so that, and then to have someone on law enforcement, I mean, that was such a big help to putting this all together, so.
Wonderful. Well, the safer we can make our school and the better, you know, obviously, everything's always a work in progress where we can always say, oh, let's improve it. But it sounds like we have a really good start, so thank you for, thank you, committee members, for your hard work on this. Because I know it, it took quite a few meetings and through your summer and everything. So it sounds like things have pulled together nicely and we'll see where we go from there. Jessie, I guess you'll take this one. The current COVID statistics in 2022-2023 Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction mitigation measures for Wisconsin schools.
Yes, so currently we have zero cases right now in the district that I'm aware of. We do have a new school nurse starting with us. She, I think her official first day was today. Her name is Tori Schmidt. And so she comes to us from Door County Medical Center. She's got two years of experience of nursing services in the post-surgical floor, I think, is what she said. And so I'm trying to bring her kind of up to speed on what the district has done, I guess, with COVID already. But Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction released some guidance back in early of August. And they actually revised it last week after some new guidance has come out. But right now, I'll just read this. It is recommended that the AlgoMa School District no longer perform contact tracing of students and staff for COVID-19 purposes. This aligns with the Department of Instruction's COVID-19 infection control and mitigation measures for Wisconsin schools in the 2223 school year. It is the district's expectation that if a student or staff member is symptomatic or feeling ill, that they will stay home. Students and staff who exhibit COVID-19 symptoms will either test at home or seek a COVID-19 test from a provider. And we, as a school district, would be a provider. We have gotten, we'll be getting free COVID testing, tests that we'll have onsite here. Students and staff who test positive for COVID-19 will stay home and isolate for days one through five of symptoms. Students and staff who return to school or work on days six through 10 will wear a face covering. The district will provide face coverings if needed. The district may change these expectations as necessary based on the infection rates of students and staff. So that is taken right from the guidance from DPI. And so would like to open it up for discussion among board members.
It was in your packet. I mean, what, what are your thoughts?
I'm glad we're not contract tracing anymore.
Well, I think we are going to try and maintain a dashboard of sorts. But it is only going to be reporting what we are aware of. And so it is going to be a little harder to really have, I mean, certainly, we will know what's happening in the school. But with all the home testing and all that kind of thing, we're gonna depend on people reporting to us.
So you're telling me we're still gonna keep up the website that tells you how many COVID cases we have as best we can?
Yes, yes. As best we can, was the thought. I mean, I think these are reasonable expectations. There's certainly a lot, you know, it's a lot more open than, than things in the past, so. It depends a lot on people just being smart, keeping their kids home when they're not feeling well and testing if they have COVID symptoms. We want, we want our students in school so we can educate them. So I think this is a very reasonable plan to do that.
I guess parents, they really, you know, really don't want masking. They have that option to keep their children at home for the full 10 days if they want, right?
Oh, yeah.
But, okay, so say their child is sick, they keep them home for a couple of days and then they go back to school. Are we gonna require anything more of them to get back into school?
Are you saying they stayed home the five days until?
Well, just say there's, you know, they don't feel good one day or two days. They've got a cold. Are we gonna require them to do anything more to come back to school?
If they, are you saying they tested or they didn't?
No, they just, they just didn't feel good for a couple of days.
I think in that case, because, I mean, we're gonna have a million of those kinds of cases and some of them aren't gonna be COVID. I mean, so we do have testing capability, and they're the quick tests, aren't they?
The rapid test.
Yeah, the rapid test. So if a child comes to the school, or, I mean, it's gonna be sort of the same thing as last year. If the child is at school, so they came to school or they developed it at school and has symptoms, I think the parents will be contacted to get permission to test them with our kit, with our quick test, so that we are aware of whether it is COVID or not. Now, if it is COVID, then we are gonna obviously ask the parents to come and get them and bring them home.
Okay.
So in the case where they were home for a couple of days with a cold and came back and they have quite a bit of symptoms that could be COVID, we'll test them and very possibly they'll be negative and then nothing happens.
I don't, I don't know if you can ask them for a test. I don't know if.
Again, we can ask them, they don't have to.
I was just, I was just reading the other day, some legal thing, and like employers cannot request, if I read this right.
You can, I believe you can. We, as a district, cannot test a student without permission from a family, the parent.
Right.
I'll have to look at that again.
Yeah, I mean, because it's.
I would have printed out my, my printer is not working.
For the well-being, you know, the idea is we want to contain, you know, any, any infection.
The district will be using Summit Labs again this year. It's the same company they had last year. It's a free service to school districts. They'll be onsite Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. I just got a call Friday afternoon, late Friday afternoon confirming this. Five hours each day to be onsite to offer free testing. If they're not here onsite on, say, Tuesdays and Thursdays, then our district nurse will be trained on doing the testing. And that is free to us. It is provided from the, the state DPI.
So if a staff member was concerned about some symptoms, they would be able to get a free test just to find out, which makes that very convenient. To your point, to your point, I don't know if you read the whole guidance thing on, but there was, there was an additional option under the returning to school work days. Days six to 10 will wear face covering. They said for, if a student is unable to wear a face covering, and, you know, I guess that would also include families that did not feel comfortable with their kids with a face covering. If they tested on day five and they were negative, they would be able to come back without. So it requires an additional test, and a negative test before they come back. But it would give them the option to come back without wearing a face mask and without keeping them home for 10 days if they did a COVID test and it was negative. So we don't have that in this policy, but if that's something that you, the board thinks we should add, it was in the guidelines. So it is another option for people.
I like that. I mean, I'm, I'm not a fan of masking, I think, especially our kids, because I think it does more harm than good. But I realize that we have to compromise somewhere because that's how things get done, you compromise. But I like that, you know, if, at the end of the five days or.
Yeah.
So they're not feeling good on Sunday, they stay home for five days and on Sunday night they test again and they're negative, they can come back to school with, with nothing.
Right.
You know, with no face covering at all.
Right.
I like that.
Yeah, that was one of the options in the guidelines. I mean, they did talk about that. So I think that would be something we could safely put in if the rest of the board is, I mean, I don't think it hurts anything. It just adds another option to people.
And I'm, and this is maybe for future, I think maybe we need to probably look at the other COVID guidelines because of the CDC's change on, on vax and unvax. You can't differentiate between the two. Isn't there something? Isn't there something in our handbook that said if you, a staff comes down with COVID?
See what we're doing with this, Pat?
And they're not bad, I mean, so I would just say.
We're eliminating that entire, we are eliminating that entire algorithm.
Oh.
So this is it.
This is going to replace what we have in our, in our, okay.
This is it.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I meant by, it's much simpler. It's not the, if you're vaccinated and you have this, or if you weren't.
And so I'm assuming if you have it, and we're requiring you to stay home, you'll be paid, paid for that time, so that.
And all that quarantining stuff that, you know, again, we're not, this is simply very much based on if you're sick, stay home, if you have COVID symptoms, test, if you're positive, then you fall into some of this stuff, and if we add the option of a negative test on day five, you can come back without a mask. If you don't want to test, you can come back with a mask for six to 10, so.
So do they need to come in and say, to the office and say, Katie, my son tested negative? I mean, is that, is that what we're requiring? I don't know.
It's going to be complicated.
Picture on their phone and email to the nurse, or there needs to be some type of proof, I think, to show that the test is negative.
And we have to take people's word for it. I mean, there's going to be a lot of just taking the parents' word for it, but yes, so.
Okay.
Taking a picture of the negative test.
We'll be working with our school nurse. So I wrote down, let me see if I'm correct on this, students and staff who return to school or work after day five will need to provide a negative test result and have an option of wearing a face covering.
Or with a negative test, the option, they can still do it if they prefer, but you're just giving them the option.
The option.
Okay.
Right, yeah, for the days six through 10, I think, yeah, I think, you know, either they provide a negative, proof of a negative test, or will wear a face covering days six through 10.
And I also want to mention staff that are out that test positive, so days one through five, when they're out, will need to use sick time for that.
Yeah, at this point, unless, yeah, unless we.
Well, it's like, I mean, it's, we got to live with it, it's like the flu. Yeah, yeah, we're going to have to, yeah, you know.
Okay. Is every, I mean, we will be actually, that is an action item, so if everybody's pretty comfortable with this, we will have another opportunity to discuss it further, but it would be nice to have some guidance agreed on before the school starts and for the staff who is in, you know, they weren't able to know anything this morning because we hadn't had this meeting yet, so. Okay, so we just reviewed the revised COVID mitigation strategies. Discuss schedule for policy and practice committee. The reason I put that in is because Jessie has received a whole lot of updated Neola policies, which he's going to be going through, and a lot of it is just routine, sort of get our, our name in this, our, you know, it's not anything that the committee needs necessarily look at, but he was thinking, we were talking, that maybe if we have a set day or date each month that the policy committee is going to meet, then any policies that do require us, he can just have ready for that meeting, and if there isn't anything, then we would just cancel it, just to try and get through, to not have all these revisions and updates sitting for too long before, before we get through them. So he will do the ones that he can, and it would be a block approval without us having to read everything, except for those that need committee eyes, then we do that, so.
So I was given a list of policies that are more of, of more importance, prioritized, I guess, so we'll start with those, but looking at the list, there's probably between 300 and 400 policies that we need to update throughout this year.
Yeah, so that's what I mean, I think.
We're just going to take them in chunks, and we'll bring.
Yeah.
A group of them to the board for approval each month.
Yeah, so I thought that, I mean, so that we're not just overwhelming, we'll just sort of peck, peck away at them, but he'll, he'll be doing most, most of the work. Okay, so that being said, is there, I guess it would make the most sense to have a meeting with enough time, you know, before it would have to be, you would have to be looking at the things. We'd have our policy meeting, and obviously, we'd want it before the board meeting, so that it could just be smooth and brought to the board at the next meeting, so maybe the week before our board meetings? Is there a?
Who's on that committee? You?
Me?
I think.
I would say maybe even a little earlier than that, because we need to create the board agenda and put the board packet together about a week before, so.
Okay, like, for instance, September 26th is our.
Meeting, so sometime like the week of the 12th through the 16th would be best, maybe.
Anybody have any conflicts there, or?
What day did you say that to?
The week of the 12th through the 16th. On the committee, it's me, you, and is it Ann? Are you on that?
I think so.
Yeah. Any conflicts, any, any preferences?
Not anymore.
Oh, National Grandparents' Day is the 11th. That's a Sunday, we'll have to remember that. Mondays are pretty good days. How about for you, Jessie? Is that sort of a busy day for you? What would?
Our admin team usually meets at nine on Mondays.
Oh, yeah, that's true. It's true. Do you prefer morning, afternoon? Everybody's easy. How about if we do it at 9:30 on the 13th? And then we would, I think maybe we should, just because dates and everything can get goofy, let's, after that, see how it goes, and then we will schedule the next one the next month.
Okay.
Okay, 9:30 on the 13th.
9:30?
Yeah. I'm not an early riser if I can avoid it. All those years of night shift, I think, did that to me. Okay. All right, we are moving into action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of July 25th, 2022, the safety committee meeting minutes of August 11th, 2022.
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Pat, seconded by Ann. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. I need a motion to accept the bills presented in our packet.
If you move.
Motion made by Dave, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris. Any questions for discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Panagol bread bid as presented.
So move.
By Mick, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. I was glad that we actually had a supplier come through.
Yeah.
I mean, I know the prices went up, but everybody's costs are up, so.
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the agreement for school-based behavioral care services between Door County Memorial Hospital, DBA Door County Medical Center, DCMC, and the Alcoma School District.
So move.
Oh, go ahead.
All right.
All right, motion made by Chris, seconded by Ann.
Okay.
Questions or further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Kiwanee County Emergency Management Memorandum of Understanding. We can discuss it if we have a motion and a second.
Okay, so move.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Pat, seconded by Chris.
I'm, tell us what this is all about.
Yeah, exactly.
This is new, or?
And I.
This is new. Tracy Melber.
Just threw it on us.
Director of Emergency Management for Kiwanee County, met with me and went through this, and so she is looking to use our school buses in the event of an emergency situation where evacuations would be required within the county. So examples would be, again, large gas leak, something happens to the nuclear plant in the southern part of the county, and so if they need to evacuate large neighborhoods, they would call out the district, which the contact person would be myself, and then I would get in contact with Tracy, our transportation manager. We would provide them our buses and our drivers, and then they would bill us for, or we would bill them, so we, they would be providing compensation for our buses and for the hourly rate of their drivers, so.
They said we, our drivers, right?
Our drivers as a district.
It doesn't say anything in here about paying us.
If you look at number three.
Yep.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, there we go.
The out-of-pocket expenses, that's, okay, that's what they're counting, all right, relating to the transportation service, all right.
A motion.
Pardon me?
The bus would get in a bad accident.
I think our district's insurance would cover.
Yeah, because it says that, too. We have to have, in order to maintain proper insurance coverages, so we'd surprise, supply the bus and the driver, but it says they're responsible for supervision of any of the people in the bus, right? It's not our drivers.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm assuming that Kiwanee and Luxembourg got these exact same things because.
I would think so.
Think so.
I would think so, I think this would be a countywide operation.
Yeah, so, obviously, if there's some kind of big emergency, we'd want to help, so.
Right.
So if, frankly, being proactive and having a plan in place, I think is a good thing, so.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, we've never seen anything like this before, so.
No.
I'm kind of surprised at that. I'm kind of surprised at that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah, I know. That we didn't, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, I know. So maybe they're starting to, you know, think ahead, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, I know you all studied the second reading of the policy, Title IX regulations, because it's such fun reading. So what was in your packet was basically all of the changes we agreed on in the first one that Jessie then put in, and so his little red indications and X's and things, and then the new one you got tonight was simply some additional little notes from our legal team in reviewing it, so, but it wasn't anything of substance in terms of our decision, so. So basically, this should, this should meet everybody's approval, because we didn't do anything beyond what we had all agreed on, so, unless somebody sees something that day. So I need a motion.
So move.
Okay, I have a motion by Ann, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, now, if there's any.
Okay, but I've got a question, though, but some of these, we have to, we have an option, we selected an option.
And we did.
We did. I mean, here, like, where did, okay, on the new revised rule, where did, okay, so note if option one is selected, then do here, and option two, then go here. So that was all done, because it's revised, so now that was done up, where you first had to select it, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Yeah, it's really confusing, frankly, the way they did this, because if you.
They had it starred on my copy, not the new one.
Right, yeah, right.
So.
Yeah, so you pick an option sometimes, and then if you picked that one, you basically had to skip, like, you know, a lot of stuff because it didn't apply.
Yes.
So, yeah, it was.
Okay.
Yes, but I did go through it, and.
So Neola is a national company that looks at board policies across all different states, and so they work closely with each individual state when they're looking at making policies, because Title IX regulations may look different in Wisconsin versus what they look like in Minnesota. We are fortunate enough that our legal counsel for the district also was consulted in creating this policy for Neola as a state.
That worked out really well.
So he, I feel very confident that with what we have here is, is solid, and that he is recommending that we move forward with it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
He would help develop it, so.
Yeah, can't beat that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need to approve Jessie Brinkman and Patricia Cloman as signers for the Nicolay Advisory Services TD Ameritrade account. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. So what's this all about?
Using my bank history, I'm assuming that this should be two signatures required account?
Correct, I believe these are for some investments that the district has.
Okay.
I believe it might be related to some bonds.
But it would require both of us to sign, okay.
Correct.
All right, and Bean, the superintendent and the treasurer would be the two obvious people.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the purchase of the bus from Nelson Bus Service not to exceed
Aye, so move.
Motion made by Dave, do I hear a second? Seconded by Chris. Any comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the private school transportation parent contracts.
So move.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, so a motion by Pat, seconded by Chris. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, what if these parents say, well, no, you got to provide that.
Provide the bus, you mean?
Yeah.
The district has the option.
We do have the option to go either way.
To which one, and it needs to stick, we can't say, this family, we're going to give the bussie, and this family, we're going to give contracts, it's all.
Okay, so, okay.
So anyone that's been going to school there, now we have to provide transportation.
Correct. I believe it's eight students that we're looking at.
How many miles can I see that go?
I believe it's five miles within the school district boundary.
Yep.
So what if we, what if we had students that lived in the southern Door District by 500 yards, and they want to come to Alcoma School?
We would not have to, because they live outside of our district, but because we, we do not have a private Catholic school within our attendance area as an option, and that Holy Trinity is the closest, and Holy Trinity is within five miles of our boundaries, we have to provide transportation, is how I understood the state law.
Yep. It is a little frustrating, like you say, the kids that already were going there are suddenly going to get, you know, they're on our dime, but it's just the way, the way it works.
Because St. Mary's was an option for them.
Mm-hmm, and it's no longer available.
We did not have to provide them transportation now that it's not an option.
Okay, so, I'm looking at that again, where was that? Where was that?
What ever happened with separation of church and school?
Oh, I know.
So that.
Long gone, Dave.
Long, yeah, so that's.
Probably because we had it.
That went on our tax dollars. Oh, times eight students, okay, there we go, never mind, got it. So if there's three in one family, I mean, do you just pay?
Per student.
Per student. Wow, okay.
If they, if they have three in one family, we want to pay for three?
We have to.
We don't have a choice. Yeah, I mean. Well, it pretty much is, but.
Yeah, it's.
I mean.
That's a part-time job, pretty good part-time job for somebody.
Yeah, it is. But you want to try and find, like I said, to try and find a van driver that's, that's, because you wouldn't need a boss, you could take it in a van, that's committed to doing that every day, would be hard to find.
And whatever schedule, additional schedules they have for whatever.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, I, I think this is
Well, and let's think of winter, too.
Yeah.
Snow days, okay? They're going off of the LC district, because they live in that attendance area.
Oh.
So
So then if they're, yeah, if we're called off and they're still on
We still would have to provide them transportation.
Transportation. Yeah, I think this is the best route.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to do the transfer, I mean, do the transportation with parent contracts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve Wednesday, November 9th, 2022, for the Veterans Day concert, and Wednesday, May 10th, 2023, for the high school spring concert.
I'll move.
We're going way ahead on that one.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We, I need a motion to approve the new COVID mitigation practices that was discussed, the printout, with the addition of the option to have a negative test on day five and return to school.
I'll move.
All right, motion made by Chris, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ann. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Request for future agenda items. Anything in particular? All right, I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute 19.85 subsections 1CE, FNI, for the purpose of personnel matters, hires, staffing, and resignations.
I'll move.
You guys are really good at this.
Wave length tonight.
Motion by Ann, seconded by Chris. Roll call vote, Chris?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes, yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Dave? All right, motion carries.